In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone can please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a benevolent justice for all.
Oh, yeah, good stuff. All right, before Christine calls the roll, just let me say to the board that the way these microphones work, I guess, the thing, the place explodes if more than three people have microphones on, and that includes the applicant. So if you're not talking, please deactivate it. Christine?
Bob Thomas and Mahir Rafiq have recused themselves, Jennifer Ragnar and Charles Brown are excused. Councilman Barson?
Here.
Theodore Chase?
Here.
Robert LaCourte?
Here.
Shaw Keller?
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Here.
Mark Dancy? And Chairman Arcini?
Here. First item of business is the regular meeting from March 6th, 2025.
Hold on one second. Okay, so everybody that's here can vote for them.
I would move to approve.
Second? Councilman Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Let the record show that Mark Dancy is coming in right now. Thank you.
The resolution, Route 27 LLC, PLN 2300019.
Mike, we may have to carry this because the subcommittee makes up of you, Bob Thomas, and Mahir Rafiq. Is that, is that right, Jim, or should we just do it with just Mike saying, okay? That's a, that's a legal question.
You only need one person to approve the resolution.
Ted, you need to turn your mic off, please, if you're not talking. Ted? Thank you. What did you say?
You only need one board member to vote to approve the resolution. It may go forward.
Okay.
So, given that I'm the last remaining person here that's on the minor subcommittee, I would move to approve.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, we have a discussion item, IDIL Davidson, the extension of time.
Good evening. My name is Paul Contratore with the law firm of Price, May, Schulman, and D'Arminio. I'm here requesting a one-year extension for the approval period. The approval period expires at the end of July. We are 99% pleaded. We have all our approvals outside agencies. We've dealt with all the resolution compliance. The one item which has taken the longest relates to a water line that is present on the property, Franklin Township's water line. It was an old line, wasn't known exactly where it was located, so the applicant did fieldwork, identified where it is, surveyed it for granting an easement. There were a number of plan changes that were required based on the water company and Franklin's requests. Most recently, there was one item left. We had an in-person meeting 10 days ago with Darren Mizai and Vince Domenech to deal with the last item. We've produced the details, so we hope to have that completed very near term. And then we're immediately going to construction permits, but obviously, it's expiring in July, so we'd like the one year just to be safe.
And this would be your first request for?
This is our own, yes, it is.
So, one year from today?
That's correct.
Okay, so I will make a motion for extension of time to May 7th, 2026.
That's... Thank you.
Okay, can I?
26.
I'm sorry?
I'm on it.
Can I turn my mic on, or did you?
No, I think, I don't know if I misspoke, in May 7th, 2026. Correct.
That's correct.
Okay, so we have a first from Mike Arcini and a second from Bob LaCourte, correct? Okay. Councilman Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Shaw Keller?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
And Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, it's time to open the public, open the meeting for general planning comments. So if you were, first of all, I should say, before we go any further, that the hearing for HSU property holdings is carried to May 21st with no further notification needed. So if you're here for that, May 21st, and that'll be on Demont Lane. Public comments, so general planning comments, if you are here for the Onyx application, please hold your comments until we open the public for that application. So with that, I move to open the public, move to open to the public for general planning comment.
Second?
All in favor?
All.
Meeting is open for any general planning comment. Seeing no takers, move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our lone hearing tonight is the continuation of Onyx, and I will turn it over to our board attorney for a brief statement and then tell you how things are going to go from there.
Before we have council enter their appearances, I wanted to make this following statement. After listening to the comments from some of the board members at the last hearing on January 15, I thought it might be helpful to provide some instruction to all of you board members with regard to your role in considering the evidence and deliberating and deciding this case. The warehouse this applicant seeks is a permitted use for this property under the township zoning ordinance. That is the case because a warehouse was permitted at the time the application was originally filed. Therefore, any doubts that you may have about the appropriateness of this location must be put aside. In making your decision on this case, you cannot factor in that in your personal opinion, this may not be an ideal or even appropriate location for a warehouse. You will recall at the January 15 meeting that two of our board members spoke about the appropriateness of a warehouse on the applicant's property. As the board attorney, I reviewed the transcript of the hearing, and in my opinion, these comments created the possible, key word, possible, appearance that the application may have been prejudged, or that there was some concern about the appropriateness of the use. Therefore, we asked two board members to consider recusing themselves, and each has done so. This is an application for preliminary and final site plan approval and for one variance with regard to the distance of proposed improvements to an existing pipeline. As to the variance, you board members will need to hear all of the evidence, and I note that some of that evidence has not yet been put into the record. For example, you have not heard from a representative of Buckeye Pipeline. In addition, you have not heard testimony from the applicant's planner about the proofs to justify the variance. In considering the application, you are, of course, permitted to rely upon the opinions of the professionals, be they representing the applicant, the objector, or the board. Finally, we ask you to keep in mind that if you think it appropriate, you may vote to approve an application and include conditions to the approval, or you may choose to deny. And I hope that clarifies your role with regard to what we have to do tonight. And if there are any questions, I'll take those questions now, otherwise, we can continue, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jim. So let me say then a little bit about what we'll do tonight regarding this application. We will ask Mr. Wizneski, who represents Buckeye Pipeline, to come up and report on the progress in terms of what they've discussed with the applicant. We will hear the applicant's engineer, and we will allow the public to cross-examine the applicant's engineer. We will not start any other testimony tonight, and we will carry the next witnesses onto the July 9th meeting of the planning board. And so this will be your notice, and Christine, if you would like to...
Okay, so Onyx 789 LLC, PLN 2200017 will be carried to July 9th at 7:30 PM at the Board of Education building at 2301 Route 27 in Somerset.
Thank you, Christine. So with that, I, yeah, go ahead, Peter.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I believe I granted the board an extension of time through the end of this month, so I am hereby on the record granting the board an extension of time through the end of July, and if you want a letter, I'll be glad to forward a letter confirming that.
Thank you for preempting, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. So with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Wizneski to, he will not go into great detail, but will summarize all the discussions he has had with the applicant regarding Buckeye Pipeline, and then we'll continue with engineering testimony, and then we'll open to the public for cross of engineer only.
How about this? Okay, there we go, start again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professional staff, ladies and gentlemen, applicant. My name is John Wizneski. I represent Buckeye Partners, the owner of the easement running across this property. I've been here before. On behalf of Buckeye, I am here tonight to report to the board on the progress of the discussions that my client has had with the applicant. As was stated in prior meetings, the concern was the terms of the easement document that exists about the addition of fill on the pipeline right-of-way. Those issues have been addressed by a modification of the applicant by the amount of fill, and there were other issues that were raised by Buckeye that the applicant has addressed, and I will just briefly talk to you about them. The most important was the fill that is over the pipeline has been adjusted satisfactory to Buckeye's concerns. One of the other issues was that the pipe, actually, in the pipeline is at the edge of the easement as it is existing today. The applicant has agreed to extend the easement to make sure that the pipeline is actually now in the center of the easement.
So the easement area is going to be widened?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Correct, counsel. There were also concerns about a sanitary manhole that was in the easement area that has been moved. There was concern about the fill and the weight of the surface of the loading dock where the trucks were coming in. That has been agreed to be changed from concrete to macadam. And there are several other small items, such as pipeline markers being put in, no vegetation being placed in the easement area. Those are all detailed in a letter that I sent to the applicant's attorney, Mr. Lanford, on April 1st, and I provided a copy to the board attorney and to the board chairman tonight. And so with that, the objections that had been previously placed on the record by Buckeye Partners have been, are being removed with this letter being submitted and with this statement tonight. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wizneski. Now, does the board have any questions?
All right, councilors, do we have any objection to moving the Wizneski April 1, 2025 letter into the record?
I have no objection.
John?
I have no objection.
All right. One follow-up question, John.
Yes, sir.
You realize that one of the items of relief the applicant seeks is a variance with regard to the distance between improvements and a pipeline?
That's correct.
All right, and therefore, your client has no objection with regard to that variance relief?
They considered that issue, and in light of the fact that there was a previous application that they also agreed to waive, or not waive, but agree to a lower distance, they felt that it wouldn't be appropriate to insist on a greater distance since they previously agreed on a lesser distance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wizneski. And with that, Peter, I'll turn it over to you.
I just, I do have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wizneski, sorry, just one question for you. So the April 1 letter did have eight, eight conditions to be met. Will Buckeye be putting out a letter once those conditions happen? And I know they've been met verbally and some on plan, but will there be a final approval letter?
So our expectation, based on my conversation with counsel, is that these items will be incorporated as part of the final resolution. It'll be a resolution compliance issue for the applicant to follow up with. Am I correct?
I agree with that. I also think that the existing easement should be amended to incorporate all of these conditions, which I think will protect everybody.
Well, that would be one of the, one of the items here is the expansion of the easement, which will require a new easement document.
Right.
But all eight of these items, I would anticipate, being included as resolution compliance items.
I would as well.
And Lanford, you agree with that? I have no problem with that.
Assuming that the application is approved.
I guess the only clarification I have is for those eight items, is the anticipation for township staff to make sure that they are met, or is Buckeye going to let us know they are met?
Well, we could certainly work with the township. Obviously, the township is going to be out there. For instance, there was one item about the manhole, the sanitary manhole being moved. You know, obviously, that'll be on the plans, that'll be part of the inspections. With regard to, for instance, the expansion of the easement, that is something that Buckeye would have to undertake and advise the township that that document has been executed and filed. But a lot of these items are actually modifications to the design. For instance, the reduction in the amount of cover, the change of concrete to macadam, these are all items that will be part of the normal approval process once the building is under construction.
Okay, thank you.
Am I addressing your question satisfactorily?
I think it'll get us there. I think what we'll probably do is, if this project is approved, that we would just ask Bowler to give us a confirmation that all eight conditions have been met in their design as well, because we wouldn't want to do a review for an outside agency.
No, and I agree, and as long as we're copied on that, we could provide our feedback as to whether or not we're in agreement with what Bowler or the applicant happens to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It would be part of the usual resolution compliance process.
That's what I would have expected.
Thank you. Mr. Wizneski, Ms. Hilbert has a question.
Hi, thank you. I'm not sure if you are the one to answer my question, or if it's something that will come up later, but for the sake of everyone here and the sake of myself, in layman's terms, I'm assuming we have set back distance for a reason when it comes to a pipeline. In decreasing that setback with the variance, are you confident that all of the adjustments that are being made are appropriate to affect the safety of other construction, or it being there itself in working operation, in like layman's terms?
So you asked a lawyer and engineering question, and you want me to respond in layman terms?
Maybe I'll wait for the engineer.
Let me, let me say this. I think there are a couple of things that I can speak to. One of the concerns was the depth of cover, the amount of extra soil being put on top of the pipeline, thereby putting additional stress on the structure. That has been addressed by reducing the amount of cover. With regard to the distance of the pipeline to the building, as I had said, there was a prior application for the structure that's there now. When that application was heard, Buckeye had considered the distance, which is not significantly different than the distance here, and agreed that it was not concerned that that distance was insufficient. So in this application, Buckeye analyzed that and said, well, if we've previously said that we're okay with that reduced distance, it would really be hard to say now suddenly we're not. And so that distance is, it's not exactly the same, but it's not significantly different. In terms of the additional pipeline marking, for instance, there's language in this agreement that says there will be additional space provided in cooperation from the landlord should there be an emergency need to address a pipeline issue, whether it's a leak or a modification, or something that suddenly needs to be done, they will provide additional space for the equipment that has to be brought on-site. And so there were, there were changes like that were made, and I think based on the totality of the circumstances, Buckeye felt comfortable that the pipeline is not significantly different from where, in location, from where they had previously agreed. The cover issue has been reduced, there is not going to be concrete above the pipe in the loading dock area, and there is now additional room around the pipeline. As I had said, in one section, the pipeline actually is on the very edge of the easement. The additional space will now make sure that that pipeline's in the center of the easement.
Thank you, I think that helps. And another question, I, I'm not sure if you can answer it, but are there other properties in existence right now on Buckeye properties that also have an exception to the distance and they're operating okay, there's never, there hasn't been issues?
So Buckeye has several hundred miles of easements throughout central Jersey and throughout the state. I really couldn't specifically speak to something other than this application tonight. It may or may not be, I just don't know.
Gotcha, thank you.
Do no other members of the board have any questions? Thank you for your turn.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And for the record, we're going to mark the May 1, 2025 letter from Wizneski and Associates LLC into the record. Has that been provided to all the board members, or will it be provided to all the board members before their deliberation?
Certainly will be provided, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with that, Peter, I think you're, you're up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, tonight is the third hearing in this matter. The first hearing was in 2024. We were here in January of 2025. At the January 2025 hearing, there were issues that were raised concerning the pipeline. There were issues concerning the intersection of New Brunswick Road and Old New Brunswick Road, and as a result of the issues that were raised by the board members that evening, we set about trying to resolve those questions and concerns of the board members. We did resolve the issues with Buckeye, as Mr. Wizneski indicated. I will have our engineer, very briefly, when he testifies, go over what the changes are on the site plan concerning that. We also resolved the issue of the intersection, which we will present testimony tonight. And I think it would be appropriate if I deal with those two issues with my engineer and then open it up to the public so that he can be cross-examined.
That's very agreeable, Peter. That sounds good.
Keith?
Mr. K, could you remain under oath?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. As mentioned, I will briefly go through the changes from the last hearing to this hearing. And what's on the wall now, that's elevated to the left side, is A2, which we presented at the hearing in January. So that is just a reminder for everybody what it looked like, and our new exhibit, which is, I will label, is it up to A5 now, Mr. Clarkin? Like, that last letter would have been A4? Or?
We marked that letter as B1.
Okay. So this is, okay, so this is A4. It's entitled Sheet C301. It's REV4 dated 4/14/2025. That's on the right side. And for reference, north is towards the bottom right-hand corner of the page. You will see Old New Brunswick running along the bottom of the page, and along the left side is New Brunswick Avenue. So you can see, and I will testify to the fact, that we did not change anything related to the building. The access areas in generally stayed exactly the same, the size, the number of stalls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What we did change, and as was discussed at the last meeting, was addressing all of the concerns from pipeline, the Buckeye pipeline, and you just heard, there are eight conditions in a letter. We have satisfied that. So I'll review those real quickly, looking at this for everybody. First, that A2, the highlighted area in orange that runs top to, top to bottom, that's on the east side of the building, that, if you look at A4, has now gotten, has gotten larger. We doubled the size of that, that easement. It used to be 20 feet, it went to 40 feet. As mentioned, the Buckeye Pipeline's pipeline in the easement, right at what I'll call the east side of the, of the building, at the corner closest to the building, is outside of the easement, and it's to plan southeast, which is just called to the left side. Hence why we added 20 feet along the left side to give the Buckeye an extra 20 feet. As mentioned, there is a, now we had proposed utilities in there, and we've adjusted those locations, as mentioned, to satisfaction of Buckeye, so they're happy. And for the record, the existing pipeline is about 12.5 feet from the existing building on-site. We're almost making it four times further away, so it's going over to 46.5 feet. So I know we still have a variance, but we made that variance a lot better because the pipeline will be further from the building. Does that make sense? Great. So relative to that easement now at A4, it's 40 feet in width, and the pipeline is closer to being centered into the entire easement. We've adjusted our site accordingly. If you note to the left in A2, where the truck courtyard is, it used to be a white concrete area. They asked to be asphalt, so we've modified it to asphalt. So there are all the issues from a planned provision that anyone from the public or board could see what the changes are. Okay? They, because of that wider easement, we now have to make a gate instead of being 20 feet, it'll be 40 feet. We'll make sure that's acceptable in, in the construction side of it, but we comply with that. Another key element relative to the site and the discussion of traffic, if you look at, again, A2, to the left, at the intersection in the exit drive aisle from the court, truck courtyard, the request was to force all tractor-trailers to make a right turn to head towards New Brunswick Road. So what we had done to help force that action is if you looked at A4 now, we've shown a design of a pork chop island. That's the layman's term. It's in the shape of a pork chop, it's elevated curb so that the trucks would physically have to run over something. And in addition, we've added a sign that says, no left turn, so the trucks are forced to make the right turn out to New Brunswick Road. There's a slight modification of the radius, but nobody really cares about that. At the end of the day, we're forcing all trucks to make right, and it comes out to the next area of contention, which again, at A2 is mentioned, was the intersection of Old New Brunswick Road and New Brunswick Road. So we spent some time there, and we've submitted drawings that were here the next area of contention, which again, at A2 as mentioned, was the intersection of Old New Brunswick Road and New Brunswick Road. So we spent some time there, and we've submitted drawings that were here prior to the last meeting before it got extended. They were roadway, intersection improvement plans. And Sheets C1 through C4, they were dated 3/18/2025. So that went to your engineer. We had shown him the proposed improvements to that intersection. So right now, I want to, Dan, if you could, bring up my next exhibit, which will be Yeah, this has been submitted, and for generalities, it doesn't need to be an exhibit because it's the exact drawing, but if you want, I'm going to refer to A5 for communication. And it's referring to the intersection improvement exhibit sheet C2.
If it's identical, it does not need to be marked.
Okay. So what this shows is, in the aerial, you can see where the existing curb line is on both sides of the road at the intersection. And if I ran the, the large vehicle, the design vehicle, the WB67, the truck would run over those curb lines. So what we have done to show and to maintain the same, I will say, accessibility to the intersection for both pedestrians as well as the bike paths, we've essentially modified the radius on both sides of this intersection. So to the east side with a plan left, which is on adjacent property per your tax map, we need to increase the radius to a 60-foot radius. What does that mean to you and the public? That curb line's going to slide back 12 feet, and the sidewalk that exists there will slide back 12 feet. Similar improvement along the west side of that intersection, and we would modify that radius as well, and allow the proposed sidewalk and the crosswalks and the stop bars all to work under this function, which would allow a WB67 tractor trailer to make a right turn into Old New Brunswick Road while the tractor trailer may potentially be sitting at either one of, in a, as if it was exiting out to New Brunswick Road. It also can make a right turn and not touch any curbs. All of this is, I'll say, geometry and design standards in normal roadway design. And we've submitted that to your engineer. He's had a chance to review that and commented that this has satisfied the circulation that would be required for tractor trailers that exited our site, which all trucks will be forced to exit right, go down to this intersection, and be able to go in either direction if necessary. Again, as described before, we'd anticipate them making a right at this intersection, going out towards Elizabeth Avenue.
Darren, have you had a chance to review these plans?
I have, and I'm assuming the next exhibit's going to be C3, which will show the truck turning movements, and they function safely.
If you'd like me to show that, I will show that. Then that would be Sheet C3?
We can continue, and, and if that was coming up next, I don't want to preempt you.
So here's the, it's Sheet C3. It's the intersection of Old New Brunswick Road and New Brunswick Road. North is to the bottom right-hand corner. As you can see from this exhibit, it's, or drawing, it's the same as C2 with the aerial overlay with that geometry, and we have shown the WB67 truck making a right turn there, and its path and tires stay entirely within the roadway, as well as the tractor trailer making a right turn, not crossing the double yellow lines. So all of that provides safe movement in and out of New Brunswick Road, onto and out of Old New Brunswick Road with the largest vehicle that would be at our facility.
Are you going to cover how you are going to accomplish the opposite corner, how you are?
I can deal with that, Mr. Foresee. When we first started investigating the opposite corner, as you call it, which is over where the nursing home is, it was our assumption that that corner was owned by the nursing home. My client did reach out to them and indicated that we would need some land in order to dedicate it to the town for the road improvements. And the owner of the nursing home indicated that they would convey the land for the intersection improvements. However, we had a searcher do a title search, and it appears that that intersection and that corner is actually still owned by the township. And if it is still owned by the township, obviously we don't have to acquire any additional land.
If you look, if you. Yeah, I'll, I'll show you too. If you can see these lines that run, I'll say directly left to right, they're power lines. And this road, Old New Brunswick Road, used to run and intersect on an angle. When they constructed this road, the New Brunswick Road, they've made this 90 degrees bending the road. This area where I reflect is the east side of that intersection on the nursing home property. It appeared to be the nursing home property specifically per your tax map. However, title work that surveyors do does not agree with that. I don't care either way because we have permission from the property owner if he does own it, and if he doesn't, the township owns it, and we're making a improvement to the intersection in, in public right-of-way. So I think we have our basis covered from either angle. Whoever did or did not record something, or we haven't found it properly, but we have our basis covered.
Peter, to resolve any possible problem, can you get, and I'll make a, a word up, a quick claim easement from the nursing home, just in the event they have some title rights to that property?
Well, first, first of all, it was my understanding that the, well, I guess we can give you an easement. I mean, originally, there was a request that it be a dedication because the township was going to get the land, but I, I think it probably is more appropriate if we get you the title work, and if we satisfy you that the township owns that corner. I don't think we need it, but if, to be safe, we can get it for you.
Thank you.
The only other item that, as discussed at the last hearing, was the sidewalk along New Brunswick Road. I testified to the fact that it is a sidewalk to nowhere. It doesn't provide any benefit along our frontage of New Brunswick Road. We have agreed to construct the sidewalk along Old New Brunswick Road down to the intersection. The applicant, though, either way, if you needed to construct it, or you force it as a condition to construct it, we will. If it's a contribution to, to the sidewalk fund, great. But either way, we're, we're at the, we're willing to comply with the condition imposed.
So there is currently a sidewalk on the opposite side of New Brunswick Road?
That is correct.
So if someone wished to go and cross over to Old New Brunswick Road, they could do that at that intersection with the existing sidewalk. However, you sidewalk on your property on the opposite side, that if, if you, if you constructed it, if we required you to construct it, would terminate at Elizabeth Avenue and would go, or would terminate before Elizabeth Avenue. Basically, never be able to be completed to Elizabeth Avenue.
Where it terminates is land that's owned by the homeowners association. So unless the homeowners association was going to extend that sidewalk, it would, it would go nowhere.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that walking on that side is preferable to the existing sidewalk on the other, which is, is shown in your view. So I would say that rather than constructing a payment to the sidewalk fund in lieu of that would probably be more appropriate. But we can see what the rest of the board thinks, but that's my opinion, because if it can't be completed, or is unlikely to be completed, or there's extra impervious coverage, or, or places, for example, that you could screen the pipeline, right, in that right-of-way? I would rather have that.
Hey, pull up A4. Just to refer back to A4.
Can I ask you, can I ask you a question before? So on that corner.
Sorry.
Where you, where you're coming down New Brunswick and you're making the right-hand turn is a fire hydrant, a sewer, telephone pole.
We're avoiding telephone poles with any utilities that need to be adjusted. We'd obviously have to move them. We're avoiding telephone poles, but if there's, if there's an existing, any type of utility there.
There is a fire hydrant on that corner.
That's, that's going to move all of that. Yeah, we'd have to. Just, I, I think that if you could pull up A4, the easement, the, the pipeline, pipeline folks want us to not have any landscaping within it. We do have the six-foot-high board-on-board fence, the screening fence. I think the chairman was referring to the area up along the right-of-way here that potentially a couple more bushes could show up there to, to help provide some additional screening, which we wouldn't be opposed to adding there. We had stuff anticipated, they asked us to remove it. I'm done, and as I mentioned, it, at the, I had completed 100% of my testimony before on all this stormwater, the landscaping, the lighting, and all of those items. This was just the modification since the last meeting. And if, to remember, I did have about, close to an hour of cross-examination before from the public.
And then when, just one last item before we go to Mr. Cahill. In our original plan, when we weren't giving the pipeline company 20 feet, we had plannings along that area. Mr. Wizniewski, and he didn't bring it up tonight, indicated that their recommendations and their practices by regulation indicate that property developers, owners should not place trees or vegetation on the pipeline right-of-way without the pipeline operator's permission, which we were unable to get. Trees and vegetation should be planted outside the pipeline right-of-way and should not obstruct the right-of-way or associated markers or signage. Thus, planting trees and vegetation with broad canopies adjacent to the right-of-way should be avoided. So what Mr. Cahill is saying is we can put some trees in the right-of-way outside of the easement, but based on these regulations, we can't put anything within the easement.
No, that, that's, that's understood. So thank you, Mr. Cahill, and I'll open up to the board for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, let me just remind everybody that the, the sound in here, the, the acoustics are a little strange. So in addition to speaking very closely to the mic, just for everybody, maybe speak a little bit louder than you might, it might feel comfortable speaking. Again, it is a big room with some weird acoustics.
Anybody, Mark Shaw? Darren?
Yes, I just have one question on the, for the intersection widening on the west side. Is there any DEP or environmental permitting required?
So we have existing permitting being required for the project, and we have to amend the repair and buffer application for that, because we will have additional disturbance. We have, we're ready to go if, if this moves forward. So, thank you.
Just a few questions. So the, the gate that's going to, that it's going to be a 40-foot wide gate, is that correct?
It probably, and I've discussed this with Darren and, and Mr. Wizniewski, it'll probably, probably be two 20-foot gates that would open, slid, slid along and open on each side. It wouldn't be a 40-foot gate.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with them to get what they need for, for.
Would it be solid or would it be open?
It's going to be the same material as the rest of the fence there.
Maybe, I'm sorry, say that again.
It's the same material as the rest of the fence, so it's screening.
Okay, so it's, so.
Solid.
Vinyl, vinyl fence on the plans would be a solid?
Yeah, it'd be a solid fence. Not a chain link fence. So yeah, it's a challenge to have something that size where, where.
Got it.
But I also, as I indicated to the pipeline, if they want their gate there to own the additional lands, you know, we're, we're giving them double the land away from their pipe. The area where this is occurring, their pipe is actually on the farther side of the easement. They don't need 20 feet there. It was the area down by the building, at the closest point to the building, where it was outside of the easement. In the area up by this gate, it's actually further away from the, that edge. So I think we should be able to come to a good conclusion on how that construction can occur without having any damage, and the fence can meet their requirements.
All right, thank you. And then, Mr. Chairman, just one suggestion regarding the sidewalk. I, I would agree with, I think, the, the assessment that putting the sidewalk along the applicant's frontage on New Brunswick Road doesn't make a, might not make a lot of sense. I'm not so sure the property that's between this property and Elizabeth is frankly ever going to be developed. It's owned by Somerset Run. So I think if, there's a good chance it will be a sidewalk to nowhere forever. I'm not sure having a sidewalk just end mid-block like that frankly is a good idea. I think instead, you might want to consider requiring that the sidewalk be extended to the east along the, the property we were just talking about, which is, we're not sure if it's the nursing home or the, or the, or the township, because it's more likely that, you know, the, the property that's on the corner of New Brunswick and Davidson may be developed, and then that way you can connect the sidewalk network in that area by going east instead of going west.
If, if it is on township-owned land, we would be glad to do it. If it is on land that is owned by the nursing home, I would need their consent. We have not discussed anything about a sidewalk. If they're agreeable to giving us additional land for the sidewalk, we would do it.
With commercially reasonable efforts.
Correct.
Fair enough. And, and constructing such a sidewalk regardless of who, constructing such a sidewalk regardless of who owns it, right, would still allow your plan as described to function safely?
Yes, we don't need to build that sidewalk, and I would prefer to write a check and the township build what they want.
Okay. If the board has any other questions, I'll open it to the public for cross. The only thing I want to, oh, oh, sorry.
I have really now two questions, or what you just said about extending the sidewalk to the east, you got the stream going underneath the culvert there. So probably the county is responsible for that. In any case, you've got a question of getting the sidewalk across the stream there, so it's not as easy as, as perhaps been suggested. I think it's a good idea because I know there is an application in process to develop the corner of Davidson and New Brunswick Road. And if we've got them to build a sidewalk down to that point, then we could have a through sidewalk, but it's not going to be quite so easy. But the, what I wanted to ask about is the plans that are currently submitted, and it's just three pages worth. And remember that the board no longer has paper copies of plans, this is the original plans, but any revisions that you cited in between, we don't necessarily have. But I looked at the landscape plan, and I saw the several detention basins, which were not in the original plan. And you've got trees growing in these detention basins, and we just had some conversation at the Environmental Commission about trees planted in detention basins. Well, you've got abbreviations indicating what the trees are, but you don't have the table that translates the abbreviations into what species and common name the trees are, which is something I, I wish we had a planning board requirement for, that they be on the same page. So I wanted to ask, what is NS and what is AR in the detention basin in front of, of the building?
Sure. So just, just to give some comfort of what was going in the basin is the recommended landscaping material by the NJDEP for BMP manual. So the additional basins that you're referring to. Yeah, just leave it there. This is Sheet C701 in your plan. Do you all have it?
No.
All right. Here's the additional basins, right, and there's planting, as well as, there's three areas. They have a specific table, it's on Sheet C702, I believe, that has all the planting materials. We are required to plant only materials that would be accepted by the NJDEP that would match the BMP for the water quality aspect of those basins. So that, they have not changed since the last submission that the engineer has received and the board received. The three drawings referred that were rechanged, revision four, were only the ones that you would be able to physically see something change. So that we sent a, a utility plan because we had to move some. plan because we had to move some utilities per the pipeline. We sent the site plan because we added the port chop island and widened the easement, and we sent a landscaping plan because we did modify the landscaping along that easement. So that's why they went in. Everything else, all the other sheets, all the details and things stayed the same. However, the entire package has to be updated with all the drawings, and we'll probably have to go to revision five for hopefully a resolution compliance if it moves in that direction that would have all the comments, especially if anything else comes out this evening, as comments and recommendations, labels, et cetera. The intersection improvements were submitted to this board and to your engineer to review. This is four-sheet package that was submitted back in the end of March, beginning of April. So all the drawings should, to give comfort, are in place. And of course, depending on how this hearing goes, you know, a final revision hopefully for my client to comply with all the conditions that are set aside for us.
I'm very happy to see that you are leaving the existing trees along with New Brunswick Road frontage to allow your new plantings to grow up and create a shield, but in the meantime, the existing trees will provide some buffering there. So I'm very happy to see that. But it's just, the point is that we get, for a particular meeting, we get what the board secretary sends to us. If you supplied something for the January meeting, we don't necessarily have that anymore because it's, we don't get the paper plans anymore. So that's really why I was asking the question. I am interested to know that all of the plant choice comes from NJDEP requirements, and we'll know that for other applications in the future. So, thank you.
Okay. So, Peter, just for the benefit of the public, when we resume the hearing on July 9th, what experts have you left to testify, just so that people will know not to ask those questions tonight?
Okay. There are three other witnesses that I intend to call. I intend to call the architect to describe the building we are constructing and explain the building and the materials. I intend to call Ms. Dolan, our traffic consultant, to discuss traffic. And I also intend to call our planner, Mr. Colling, to justify the one variance that we are seeking.
Thank you. So with that, and if there are no other board questions for Mr. Cahill, I would like to make a motion to open to the public four questions directed to the engineer for the applicant.
Second.
All in favor. Meeting is open. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll be sworn in by our planning board attorney.
Dave Robinson, 349 Billmore Lane. Two questions that were on issues.
Mr. Robinson, can I swear you in, sir, please?
Pardon?
Can I swear you in, sir?
Oh, please.
Sure. Raise your right hand. Psalmically swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Thank you.
Robinson, 349 Billmore Lane, Somerset Run. First question has to do with the nursing home that you say you approached to get their approval when you thought that that particular chunk of real estate belonged to them. Did you describe the full breadth and a number of trucks that will be running in and out of Onyx on a daily basis? Did you describe what traffic is going to pile up at that intersection that might prevent emergency vehicles to get to Somerset Woods? Did you give a full description of what actual impact on traffic this development will generate?
I was not the one who approached the nursing home. My client did, and all we asked was for them to give us land to improve the intersection, to make it safer, which was the intent and the request of the board and of the township engineer.
Well, don't you think that would be useful information for Somerset Woods to consider how the truck traffic will impact their business and the people that live there?
I can't speak for them.
Why not? You presented it as if they had approved what you were doing.
Mr. Robinson, I don't believe it's relevant to the issues in this case. I think we should move on. Thank you.
Okay. So the safety of Somerset Woods. All right, next question regarding the pipeline. You're quite proud of the easement addition you made, the 20-foot wide addition, and compared it to the existing retail easement that was granted several years ago. Wouldn't you agree that the difference between the application of a retail mall and a truck-loading area is quite different, and that even though you've increased the easement width, the application and use is quite different from a retail mall where there was very little traffic in the back of that retail mall? Isn't that a difference that should be considered?
I think our planner can address that in his testimony when he, at the next meeting.
We also satisfied what Buckeye wanted and gave them land. So I wasn't proud of it all. I didn't want to give them anything. They don't need it. They shouldn't have had it. They should have put their pipe in the easement where it's supposed to be. So I'm not proud of the easement at all, and frankly, we satisfied what they looked for.
All right. I have no other questions.
Good evening. I'm not as tall as Dave. My name is Lee Blum, B-L-U-M. I live at 637 Viscaia Court in Somerset. Viscaia is V-I-S-C-A-Y-A.
Mr. Blum, raise your right hand, please. Psalmically swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
To help you, God. Thank you.
I am not an engineer. I'm not an architect. I'm not a lawyer. I have a quick question. Could the warehouse be built without the loading bay area, without that loading bay area existing?
Warehouse needs loading bays, so it can't be built. A warehouse can't be built without loading bays.
Thank you. Oh, wait a minute. Why not?
It stores material. We bring materials in and out by a truck.
So the...
We load it.
So the loading bay area is integral to the warehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Carla Visser. I live at 1107 Conrad Way in Somerset, in Somerset Run. Good evening.
Could you please raise your right hand?
Oh, yep.
Thank you. Psalmically swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Sure. Carla Visser, V-I-S-S-E-R. Good evening, Chairman Mark Healy and the rest of the planning board. I'm here tonight to speak for the senior citizens enticed to this area in the early 2000s by Franklin Township.
Can I interrupt you a second? This, any sort of statement like this, there'll be opportunity when we conclude the hearing, if we conclude the hearing in July. This is only for cross-examination of the engineer. So do you have an engineering question?
No. Excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Burns. I live at 79 Haverhill Place in Somerset.
Raise your right hand. Psalmically swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
I do.
Thank you.
As far as the Buckeye pipeline is concerned, I would have asked Mr. John Waznuski, if I had the opportunity, a question because, can I ask, what is running through that pipeline? Is it liquid, gas that goes through there? Is it gas or is it a liquid? You don't even know what is in the pipeline? Oh, my God. That is more shocking than I can even imagine. What is in that pipeline?
I'm not to be speaking for what Buckeye runs in there, but they have different products that go through that pipe. And I'm going to leave it at that. It's a petroleum product. It can be different products.
But it has been there. It has been there long before this application, and it has been part of, this is probably the third or fourth application. The two or the three have never been built, yet they've been approved, and that pipeline's been there the whole time.
That is correct.
That is somewhat besides the point. If you're going to do any construction or build or put anything on the pipeline like 18-wheelers going in and out all the time. And the reason I'm concerned about it is because you yourself said if there was an accident, you were going to have them build an area where they can put trucks that if they needed to service the pipeline. You know, I would have assumed you would have known what was in the pipeline. But the other reason when I would have asked Mr. Waznuski was, I'm thinking of Route 80 and the mines and the way they have caved in because of all the traffic over the decades. And I'm just a little concerned about all the heavy traffic from all the trucks and going over that pipeline. And I would like to be reassured. Actually, I don't want to be reassured because I don't want a warehouse where many seniors have to shop and would have to contend with tractor-trailers coming in, going out. I don't want the warehouse there, I'll be very honest. But I would have liked to know a little bit about, you know, the traffic that that pipeline can withstand. That's a question. You know, give me some numbers on that. And the sinkholes on Route 80 is what is bringing me to that aspect question. And as far as Somerset Woods, I happened to shop at ShopRite, and I was there the day where EMS was called. There was some emergency at Somerset Woods, and there were, I don't know, 10, 15 EMS vehicles. They closed old New Brunswick Road.
Is this a part of an engineering question? I mean, the pipeline was fine. We will try to get you that answer. But is there a directed question to the...
As far as the EMS and Somerset Woods?
Yeah, I mean, this is anecdotal. I mean, the board can't consider it regardless.
It's part of Franklin Township police records, I'm sure, because they were all there. And I was a witness, personal witness to it.
Okay. Is there an engineering question to add, you'd have to ask that's relevant to that?
To the...
Circulation.
Engineering, it would have to be, it's more of a traffic question.
Our traffic expert will be here on July 9th.
Okay. And the other question that I have is, oh, I can't think of it right now. I am concerned about the stream and the water and the DEP and all that. But I guess I can't think of another question. Just mostly traffic turning in from Elizabeth, New Brunswick Road. And I'm also concerned about truck traffic in Franklin Township. Trucks mean pollution. You're condemning...
Again, that's something the board can consider. Based on New Jersey planning law, we can only consider the impact of this application. We will get you the answer about what is in the pipeline, and the traffic expert will be here on...
Who can address my question about pollution, truck pollution?
Jim, I don't know. It's not something...
There's no case law in New Jersey that permits a planning board such as this to take that sole factor into consideration. Because it's going to generate some pollution is not a valid reason to deny an application that will generate truck traffic. That's the law.
So, and safety for seniors, that safety for seniors is also not a consideration?
Safety is a valid consideration.
Okay, well, how can I ask that in a question? I mean, is that now for, or is that the next meeting or something? Because I'm concerned about the safety of people turning. As I, you know, by the CVS, if I'm sitting on New Brunswick Road and cars are even turning to make a left into, towards the CVS, towards the Dunkin' there, that stop needs to be pushed back more because if I were to stop where that line is, I would be hit. And that's just from a vehicle. I can't imagine a truck making that turn. There are many considerations for safety, I think.
Let me follow up on your safety question. When the planner testifies for the applicant, you can ask the planner your safety questions because one of the things the planner has to do to justify the variance is to demonstrate that granting the variance in this application will not result in any substantial detriment to the public good. And obviously, safety is encompassed within the public good.
Yes. Okay. But next meeting, I'll be here.
If it makes you feel any better, the rock conditions up by Route 80 are very different, and you don't have that here. It's shale here. We won't have any sinkholes. Limestone, coarse rock conditions are at Route 80, and that's that problem. You don't have it in your municipality.
Well, I would ask Mr. Buckeye that.
Well, we've spent a lot of time with Buckeye, and they have 106 pages of design criteria, and they made sure that we met them. So I'm confident we're hitting what they need because we satisfied all their questions.
Okay. I'm still against the warehouse. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Good evening. Wayne Menke, 671 Post Lane.
How do you spell your last name?
M-E-N-K-E.
Raise your right hand.
I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand. Psalmically swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just, I have some questions for clarification. Looking at the back. Is the only entrance into the facility from New Brunswick Road?
Old New Brunswick Road. We have vehicle access for passenger vehicles on the west side, further to the right side.
This is old New Brunswick?
Yeah, this is old New Brunswick.
So you have to come in on New Brunswick?
You can't get into the site from New Brunswick Road. You have to come on to old New Brunswick Road.
But the only way to get on to old New Brunswick is from New Brunswick?
Correct.
And you can come in from either direction?
Correct.
And you can exit either way on New Brunswick?
You could, yes.
Okay. What's to prevent trucks from coming down old New Brunswick from Elizabeth Avenue?
Come down old New Brunswick from Elizabeth? Oh, you're saying, if we had the aerial up, you're saying cutting through the shopping center?
Basically, yeah.
Yeah, it's not permitted. We don't have that access. It's a private road. So there's no agreement between my client and the owner of the shopping center to allow our traffic to come through his site, hence why we have to come around to New Brunswick Road.
I mean, would trucks be aware of that, or...
Say again?
Would trucks be aware of that, that they can't make a left?
Yeah, our adjacent neighbor is making sure that...
I'm sorry?
Our neighbor is making sure that we take our traffic, not through his site, so...
Okay. How about people that work who would be driving automobiles, they can access the facility from either direction?
Yeah, I mean, if I went to the shopping center to go grocery shopping before or after, I'm a customer of his, and that would not prevent me from driving.
It's just a question.
Yeah, but I can't, you know, there's not a concern if the employees go to the shopping center and use the shopping center. It's good for business, for his business. But he doesn't want our tractor-trailers disrupting his business, impacting his road. It's not the town's road. He maintains it.
Did you seek approval from the owner of the road that...
I did, and I think I indicated that at either the first or second meeting, that the owner of that center would not allow our trucks to go through there. I asked for permission.
Okay, all right. And the exiting from Old New Brunswick, onto New Brunswick, making a right, there's no, are there any issues when they then, if trucks then get down to the corner of Elizabeth and Old New Brunswick about making turns there?
No.
Not a problem?
Okay.
Dr. Robert Weintraub, 674 Post Lane, Somerset.
Raise your right hand, oh, you already have, thank you, Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
With this, that the trucks are passing the nursing home, and the trucks are going to be in the area of many senior citizens' domiciles, it seems to me, I'd like to know if there have been any environmental, environmental impact studies on the exhaust spewed by the
Submitted environmental impact statement for this project. We submitted an environmental impact statement for this project in compliance with the town's checklist. We did not get any negative feedback or comments that we have not addressed, and I think that's-
So there has not been an impact study on the pollution?
Section addressing air, it was noted per the resolution, I mean, per the checklist, and again, there's no concern from pollution, from a permitted use for warehouses in this area. I mean, the traffic that's around there itself.
Who said that?
In our report, for the air-
Who was citing?
Based on the checklist, we've followed what was asked and answered. That's what our office has done.
But is there a, an agency that will give you permission, or?
No, there is not. The town has, the town has the obligation to review it per their checklist, we provided it.
Okay. In the storehouse, what is, what are the operating hours and what are they storing?
Don't know what they'll be storing, it's 24/7 operation.
Are they going to be sto, are they, it's 24 hours?
Let me just interrupt there, the planning board does have the ability to-
I can't hear you.
The planning board has the ability to shave the applicant's hours. I don't believe the planning board has agreed to a 24/7 operation, nor would the planning board necessarily agree to a 24/7 operation, given the adjacent residential use. So let's hold that question in abeyance, because I don't think we've gotten to that point yet. The planning board, as the planning board attorney noted, can put reasonable conditions upon the application, and I would think this might be one of them.
Okay, last question. Are, is the storehouse going to be storing any noxious or toxic materials?
I can't answer it as I don't know who's renting or leasing, but it has to be in compliance with all state and federal regulations of what would be stored there.
Is that sufficient for you, the board? I would like to know that there are none.
There, if I may answer that, there are different requirements for the warehouses if they store that, those types of materials. Those are construction issues. Right now, we don't have a tenant or user for that building. But obviously, depending on what that tenant or user intends to do with the building, he would have to get the appropriate approvals from the building department. And if there are materials that are either flammable or things of that nature, they have to be accounted for, and have to be approved by the construction official.
My name is Philip Ruziska, that's R-U-Z-I-S-K-A. I live at 4304 Chesterwood Way.
Raise your right hand, Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a comment about the checklist that didn't, you're not sure that, that was addressing the, well, I'm concerned that, you said the checklist was done about the, well, anyway, let me put it this way. There was a checklist that was reviewed with us at the first meeting, or at least the first meeting I went to, and the engineer did not come out to the property, and was not aware that that road from Elizabeth Avenue to the entrance, truck entrance, was private property. So that if, that person did not come out to the property to see what the area was like, how could she have managed to recognize that there might be some air activities in the area that would affect the Somerset Woods and the people shopping at ShopRite?
I don't understand the question.
I would, I would assume that, so, I mean, Somerset Woods, the ShopRite, any use around that? And obviously, everyone here is not, you can't tell me that everyone filling this room lives within 200 feet of this, in God's letter. So they are publicly aware, and can come and address the application, or address their concerns if they had any. And the board can only deal with who's here.
Okay, I would think that you would like to make sure that was the case, though, that it was, it was looked at.
My name is Alan Turkell, I'm at 554 Post Lane, Somerset.
Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Are we aware of the load, T-U-R-K-E-L? Are you aware of the load-bearing weight of both roads, Old, New Brunswick Road and New Brunswick Road?
Yeah, there, in terms of the traffic that's allowed there?
Yeah, there's traffic allowed there, but considering the added traffic, we don't know the weights of, that those trucks are going to carry.
The tractor-trailer weights are all complying with NJDOT trucks.
Okay.
And there's no structural elements that would be, would not, would prevent, like a bridge or something that has a weight limit, that would prevent vehicles exit or enter our site.
Now, when they make, when the trucks make that left turn onto New Brunswick Road, either they're going to go straight through to Cedar Grove Lane, or make a left turn on Davidson Avenue, correct? If they make a left turn on Davidson Avenue, and their cars go heading, say, to Somerset Run, or to make a right turn, those are big trucks. There could be, and the light where the truck, where opposing, where the Davidson Road is, have very little room for a big truck to make that turn. Are you going to be able to get the, a change there?
Yes, we can make a, there, there's enough room relative to the width of roadway, but the stop bar location may need to be adjusted.
Yes. Are you going to be able to get that change?
Phyllis Finebloom, 570 Post Lane, Somerset. Thank you. My biggest concern-
Could you raise your right hand first, please? Thank you, Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
I've had the unfortunate experience of coming up Davidson Avenue from Pierce Street to New Brunswick Road, and being behind a tractor-trailer. That section of Davidson Avenue does not allow tractor-trailers, and that tractor-trailer then went to make a right on Elizabeth Avenue. My biggest concern is truck traffic at that intersection of Davidson and Old New Brunswick Road. I just want to be sure that if we have trucks coming out of this storage facility, they're only allowed to make a right turn.
You're requesting to only make a right? Are you referring to the intersection of-
From Old New Brunswick Road onto New Brunswick Road.
Okay, you're requesting only to make a right?
And not to make a left turn, because New Brunswick Road, as it continues down to Cedar Lane, is much too narrow, and would have to be revised, and they can't make a left turn onto Davidson because trucks aren't permitted. And that intersection coming out of Somerset Run to Davidson is a very difficult intersection.
I'm unaware of trucks not being allowed on Davidson Road, there's, at the corner of Davidson and New Brunswick Road, there is a-
Between Pierce and New Brunswick Road on Davidson, no trucks are allowed.
Unless they're delivering, because there is, there is a facility at that intersection that has a loading dock, and I think they're allowed to go up to that loading dock, or they're allowed to go up to that facility.
Yeah, but they're not allowed to continue.
That's at the end of Davidson Road.
I'm Allison Sherman, 529 Rose Cliff Court.
Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. A question just popped into my head when the discussion, the woman was discussing the pipeline. Is there any control of the type of clients that will go into that warehouse, that will not have combustible items, or toxic items, or anything that could become an issue with the pipeline? And then we'd have a very big issue.
If, and I'm not an architect, but if there are materials of that nature, the facility has to be constructed with specific safeguards to deal with those items. And you would have to apply for a building permit, you disclose to the township, I am storing A, B, C, or D, and then the township code officials will make sure that whatever items are being stored there are properly secured.
So someone will regulate it and be aware of what's going into the warehouse? Or we have to be told?
No, they would have to apply for, for a certificate of occupancy to occupy the warehouse, and they would have to disclose what their use is.
Paul Walitsky, 13, Republic Row, Somerset.
Sal, we swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Question about the pipeline.
Name?
Question about the pipeline. The original thing that you changed, you said, was can put soil on top of the pipeline to a certain height. Now, have you lowered that number, lowered the height?
Yeah, yes, we've satisfied the pipeline with the earthwork proposed on top of the pipeline.
Did the original height come from the DEP because of the water management issues that other warehouses are doing on Schoolhouse Road? There, the warehouse is going to be three feet higher because of water management issues.
Two completely separate issues. We have, we have to meet, we have to meet the stormwater management regulations for the design of our storm basins. It's the bottom elevation has to be above water, we have to do that. We're going to this town who reviews it, your engineer, the DEP, as well as others. That sets our finished floor relative to what's around it. When we designed initially to make life easier for our proposed construction, we were filling in areas, they asked us to reduce that, and we did.
So the reduction is not subject to DEP approval?
No, we didn't, we didn't, the grading and the stormwater management, yeah, they're going to review that, and they are. But the, the earthwork on top of the pipeline is not reviewed by the DEP, it's reviewed
Seeing no other takers, I'm going to move to close the public portion. All in favor? All right, so once again, July 9th in this room, and we will continue. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, folks. All right?
Good night.